At a project, we would absolutely listen to them. If it's an existing property owner and they have a proposal, we'll listen to that proposal. As we move forward, should the package be approved as it is, then we would probably set up some outreach to anyone that would like to speak to us about it. But at this stage in the game, we're not proposing any kind of requirement for people to come to us and we aren't actively going out and recruiting people at this time.
Okay, well, those are my questions right now. I would only also comment that moving forward, I think it would probably make sense to set up some form of an additional or newer committee to do an outreach for the specific 20 landowners to see if there's anything we can do to get them to a place where the projects could actually be viable. So that would be at least one of my recommendations. I have no more questions, though. Thank you for listening and answering my questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mogry.
Thank you Chair Sylvester, and thank you to the staff for all the work you've done. And working with HCD, I know as Development Director Thomas was noting, that HCD has been more strict this time around. I mean, maybe with us, but I think not just us, but more broadly. So it's been, I think it's across the state. So I think it's been hard for our staff to meet what HCD is asking for, and I think they've done a good job of trying to balance all the different issues. So thank you and welcome, Robbie, and good to see everyone here and nice to be in person for this meeting. I have a few questions, a lot of questions around traffic. But before we get into those, I have a question, just clarifying on the objective design standards. Do those apply to all developments? So do they apply to the Agora Hills overlay plus any development that meets a 20% low income? Am I correct on that?
I will give you an answer, and Jessica Clevenger can chime in because she's the person that prepared that portion of the staff report, and she would be our subject matter expert on the ODSs. The way that the objective standards work is there's a state law that says we can no longer use subjective standards to evaluate and approve multifamily projects. And so we have citywide standards that we hired a consultant to come in and to take a look at our general plan, our zoning ordinance, and our subdivision map, and all of our specific plans and guidelines, and to prepare a buffet of objective standards. So their best effort was to go through and take some of the subjective standards we had and make them objective, and that's what you'll find in our citywide standards. That's where we got the design, and that would apply to any multifamily project that exists or one that wanted to redevelop, and any mixed-use project that has residential that exists or wants to develop. We did a separate exercise where we took the affordable housing overlay, because the intent of the affordable housing overlay is to try and induce private investment in the city and have private developers to construct the affordable housing on-site as opposed to just donating money in lieu. And in exchange for that, it's an expedited process, and we believe that the expedited process, which would reduce time, the increased density that would be available, and whatever incentives they would ask for as part of their density bonus could make the projects feasible. And for those projects, we have a different set of objective standards. So it depends on how you process your project. If you are in the AHO and you choose to use the AHO, then you're looking at the AHO objective standards and the design standards that are citywide. If you choose to develop utilizing the discretionary process, then you would be subject to the citywide objective standards. If you're not in the AHO at all and you want to develop a multifamily project, yay you, we're happy to have the units because you would have to provide some affordable units which could help us to offset some of the RENA allocation, and you would be subject to the citywide development standards, not the AHO standards. Does that clarify it for you?
Okay, so outside of the AHO, are they required to include affordable housing? Or can they do the in-lu fee?
Yes, so outside of the AHO, you can provide 15% affordable on property in the varying income ranges, or you can pay the equivalent in-lu fee based on our inclusionary housing ordinance. So either way, you have to provide affordable.
Okay, and then if there is a project outside of the AHO and they are meeting a 20% bar, are there any benefits they get from the state laws? I may be mixing up some of the...
There are. If you have an affordable housing project and you're not in our AHO and you decide to build, it's the provision of the affordable units that triggers some of the state benefits for providing affordable housing. So it is beneficial because we would get the units and we would have the ability to count those units towards our RENA. And it's beneficial because our community would have diverse housing stocks, so it is a benefit.
But I mean, what advantages does the developer have if they meet like a 20% bar outside of the AHO?
The state density bonus law is complex and there's a lot that goes into it, and it has a lot of factors. I couldn't speak to what the state density bonus law would allow you if you're doing 20%. But what I can tell you, that our inclusionary housing law ordinance would require 15%. So if you were a developer building 15% on property, you would be entitled to a concession and waivers. And you would identify, hi, I'm building affordable units, and this is the concession I would like to have, and these are the waivers I would like to have. So that is the benefit for 15%. I believe the benefit for 20% is the same, but I would have to consult the state.
Okay, thank you. And then, so I also have a question regarding the level of service. I think within the text, it noted that level of service would be used to study projects, public works projects, and projects where there was changes and modifications to the bike lanes. But what about, are there any projects which could add a significant amount of traffic but would not create any infrastructure change? Is that possible? And would they be analyzed using LOS or not?
For that, I'm going to defer to the transportation engineer.
So every project that comes in would have to do their own separate studies. So this looked at, you know, the entire programmatic impact. And so each of these projects would be required to do a level of service study. And if you degrade the level of service, then you are required to mitigate either through signal timing or geometric modifications to the roadway.
So any multifamily housing, there would be a level of service study included?
If you're generating over 50 peak-hour trips, yes.
Okay, good, thank you. And then, so the design standards themselves don't have anything about traffic and level of service? Because they are designed and the way it looks, they don't include environmental traffic impacts and such? Is that correct?
Can you repeat the question?
So the objective design standards do not include anything about traffic and level of service? And that's because it's a design standard of the way something appears rather than how it affects the environment?
That's true. So essentially, the objective standards, the general plan, the zoning ordinance, and the subdivision ordinance have to be objective. And so any objective standards that are adopted at the time that an application is submitted, you're required to comply. One of the objective standards is that you have to comply with the Green Book, and that's what the engineers use. It's very difficult for the building department and the engineering department to quantify all of their requirements because there are design and safety issues that cannot be made objective. They're dependent on studies that have to be provided. But one of the application requirements that we're going to ask is that you submit a traffic impact analysis for your project at the time of application. So we would receive the application and a traffic impact analysis. And then the public works department would take a look at it to see whether or not you triggered the 50-trip threshold that they're looking at. And at that point, you would be responsible for making whatever the necessary improvements are to accommodate your development. So that's how we would capture it.
Okay, so we can still take into account impacts on traffic and deny a project based on making significant changes to LOS?
I don't know that you would be able to deny a project because of LOS. More likely, you would figure out what needs to be done to the roadway segment to accommodate that traffic. And you would either pay an impact fee or you would make improvements at your site that could make the traffic flow better.
Okay, thank you. And then, I did have some questions on the traffic slides for the trips on Canaan. Could we bring those slides back up?
Did you have a slide in particular or zone in particular?
The ones where we're looking at the number of trips along Canaan. I had just some clarifying questions.
Erica, could you please go back to the transportation trips that are in the infrastructure and mobility section? And I'm going to defer to Laura to answer whatever traffic questions you have.
What slide number is that?
I think you can do Slide 76, maybe start there.
While we're looking for that slide, one other quick question. So when we looked, the evacuation data was all based on a max build-out, right? So that's if the full 2,300 or so units were built out across the city?
That's correct.
Commissioner Mogry, are these the slides that you're referring to?
Yes, one or two down where we see the additions. Okay, so actually, can we, so the 2,200, what's the base? And then what is it, because that's additional with the HO, right?
That's correct. So the existing is 1,615 of the, you're talking about the northwest corner of Canaan and To?
Oh, no, I was talking about the top 2,200 on Canaan. Yeah, you're right, sorry, yes.
So the existing general plan proposes 1,615 daily trips. And then the AHO would add an additional 2,200 daily trips.
Okay. And then the 2,225, can you explain? I'm not exactly sure which part of the map that's referring to.
Sure, so it's a combination along roadside, primarily your J, G, and K.
And the Wizened Center and that area there?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So the previous slide is not current trips, right? That's if the general plan was built out fully?
That's correct.
Okay, do we know what current trips are versus what AHO would produce?
Going into and out of the zone, I can give you an idea of, like, for example, on Agora Road, there's about 12,000 to 13,000 daily trips a day on Agora Road, approximately in that area.
So we're talking about 10%, 20%?
Correct.
Okay, and what about in Canaan?
Canaan's about 35,000 a day.
Okay, so it's actually a smaller impact along Canaan, okay. But it's already pretty bad there, okay. That was one of my questions. So that was actually all the questions I had related to traffic. I did have some questions on what happens if we don't approve. So there's this, I believe, October 15 or mid-October deadline from HCD. What are the ramifications if we don't approve a general plan update and housing element by then?
For that answer, I'm going to defer to Diana Verrett, our city attorney.
Hello, commissioners. The answer to that is the state law was recently changed. So if the city gets a certified housing element by October 15, which is the goal and the timeline that staff has set forward is attempting to do that, then the city will have its housing element and general plan in substantial compliance with state law in time, will not be subject to any shortened timelines for any implementing rezoning actions, and will not have any time period during which the general plan will be potentially subject to challenge as not being validly in place. There's always the possibility of a third party, but we get a presumption of validity if the state approves it. So the goal here is to make that happen. If we do not meet that October 15 deadline, our housing element will be out of compliance until the time at which we accomplish both the adoption of the housing element and the rezoning action. And we will be subject to potential enforcement from HCD and potentially the Attorney General in addition to being subject to potential third-party actions for not having a valid general plan. So hopefully, that answers your question with respect to the consequences.
Can you explain what that means in terms of, I mean, my understanding is that we will have less control of what is developed in our city if we do not have a certified housing element and plan. Does that mean that a development project can go forward without going through any even city approval? Can the state start approving projects in our community?
It's not so much that the state will start approving projects, but the city does lose some authority to approve projects. And if someone were to challenge the city for not having an adopted housing element, the court in such a case could issue an order preventing the city from issuing basic building permits for non-residential projects, requiring the city to approve certain housing projects. So there are potential court order ramifications in a lawsuit where someone were to challenge the city's lack of a valid housing element. There are also some automatic sort of consequences with respect to projects that are proposed that contain 20% for lower income. And for those projects, we would lose a certain amount of discretion and be forced to approve such projects. So it is certainly, in our opinion, better to get the housing element adopted with HCD certification to maintain the local control to the extent still allowed by state law.
Technically, if a developer wanted to meet the 20% requirement of the overlay, the HO, the affordable housing overlay, they would qualify for potentially going around our city rules for development. Is that correct if we don't have an HCD-approved housing element?
Well, so, sort of, but what you're describing is if we, if the scenario you're discussing is if we don't adopt the housing element and don't accomplish the AHO in time, and so the AHO in that arena wouldn't exist. State law basically says if you propose a project with 20%, then the city's discretion with respect to disapproving that or conditioning it is extremely limited. And so the issue there is we wouldn't even have the standards we're trying to build in through the AHO in place to craft the project in a way that the city would prefer to see those projects be built.
Okay, thank you. I think that answers the question. I had one other question regarding the shopping center locations. And if those were removed from the housing element, what kind of density of housing would still be allowed there based on our general plan update?
Based on the general plan update, you would be allowed to do, if the rezoning program were adopted somehow, the rezoning program is only consistent with the general plan if the general plan is amended. So you would have, the general plan would be inconsistent with the zoning. And if the general plan is inconsistent with the zoning, I think the consequences that Diana explained, it would have to be settled at the court because your general plan would govern. But the way that we're proposing it, the density on the shopping centers is 6 to 15 dwelling units an acre. And if they wanted to take advantage of the AHO, it goes up.
So the numbers we see in the maps are assuming the 20% AHO, but, which is a higher dwelling, like a 20 dwelling units per acre, right? Which is just slightly higher than what would be allowed even if it's not in the housing element?
Correct, it would be the difference between a max end of 15 DU's per acre and 20 DU's per acre on the minimum end.
Okay, so even without being included in the housing element, we could see housing there?
If everything got approved without it, yes. It would be, we would not make the deadline if we took a site out at this point. We'd have to get in the back of the line at HCD, and we wouldn't be able to make the deadline. So it would not be our recommendation that you do that. But to answer your hypothetical, you're correct. The 6 to 15 dwelling units per acre, if we were to adopt the changes to the zoning map, would apply to all of the commercial shopping center mixed-use sites. So you could see 6 to 15 dwelling units an acre at that location regardless. And then you would see, you could see different density if you had an AHO on top.
Okay, thank you. I think that answers all the questions I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Chair Wolf.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I too have a few questions. I'll just start. So Site D, Site O, Site P, and Site Q are the only sites listed here that are not in the very high fire severity zone? And I should have posed that as a question. Is that correct, that there are only those four sites are the only ones that are not in the very high fire severity zone?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, so none of these sites besides, I mean, only the Agora Village specifics plan was included in previous cycles. Is that correct also?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Those are two. Then my third question is, and I discussed this with you a little bit before, but the interplay between our city's oak tree ordinance and the affordable housing overlay. So on site, on some of the sites where there wouldn't be mitigation possible, well, actually, more than the question is, it's for heritage and mature oaks would not be able to be removed. Is that correct?
Heritage-sized oak trees and landmarks. So it depends on which document you look at. It's defined as heritage in some documents, it's defined as landmark. We've included it as both because we want to make sure it's captured. So the heritage-sized, landmark-sized oak trees are prohibited from being removed. And the trees that are not heritage or landmark-sized, you have to mitigate on property. And scrub oaks, you have to mitigate on property as well.
Yeah, I see one of the sites, it could possibly be difficult for that. So my other questions were answered. Another question is, when did we appeal to SCAG and get denied for lowering the number of housing?
That was one of the first things that I did when I started working here in the winter of 2020.
Can you expand upon that process a little bit about what that was like, appealing to them?
It was not pleasant. So essentially, there was an opportunity for communities to appeal the RENA numbers that they received. And we felt that our RENA number went from 115 up to 318, and 67% of the city is in the very high fire severity zone. So I went to HCD, I got on that Zoom call with the board. It's a very large board from people all over the Southern California region. And I explained to them, and I showed them graphics of what our city looked like. And I explained to them that we had just survived the Woolsey Fire. And I explained to them that it is very difficult for us to find sites in our city that are suitable that are not in the very high fire severity zone. And they began to discuss it. And one or two of the commissioners did entertain our idea, but at the end of the day, they shut me down and they said no. They asked whether or not we had a moratorium. I said no, and they said, your unit is 318. And then they called on Rancho Palos Verdes, and they just moved right on. So the hearing lasted for maybe five minutes, and they were not receptive at all. But I felt it was my responsibility to at least try and advocate for a lower number because if we could get a lower number, we might be able to achieve that without having to put so many people in the very high fire severity zone. But there was no sympathy, there was no deference. They truly did not care. They were like, 318 is your number, and thank you very much for coming. And so that was my experience.
And thank you for sharing that. And so that is for our RENA numbers, the end-all-be-all. The only path to have those numbers lowered was through the SCAG appeal process. We exercised that, and we're not successful. That's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so thank you for sharing that. Another question is, so if this housing element is approved and the planning commission approves it, the council approves it, we send it to HCD in October, and we're taken off the naughty list and we have an approved housing element. Does that mean that it is set in stone for the next eight years? Or could amendments be made once it is approved?
So the housing element itself is not set in stone. If throughout the review process, we decide that we want it to amend our housing element, there is a process for doing that. You would submit your proposed revision to HCD, and then HCD would tell you whether or not you could or couldn't do it as proposed. And they would provide guidance as to what you could do to change it. We wouldn't be able to adopt another amendment until HCD agreed to the adoption. So likely, if you pulled sites off and you said, our buffer, for instance, is less than what they want, then they could conceivably ask you to find another site to replace the site that you're removing. But it's not set in stone, we can absolutely make changes to it. The process is just different and longer.
Right, so I just want to wrap my head around that, that if it passes both the lower house, the upper in the city, then the, sorry, the planning commission and then the city council gets through. We are not locked into this, there is a process for looking at other sites throughout the next eight years.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I had a list of like 15 questions, but one by one, the fellow commissioners went through and answered them. So these were the remaining ones that I did not have answered. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair Wolf. Well, the good thing about going last is that a lot of my questions have already been addressed. But I would like some clarification because I know there has been a lot of confusion about the numbers for Agora Meadows, Twin Oaks, and Agora City Mall. And we've all heard from members of the community in the letters and emails about the number of 564. So could you please clarify for me why that number is not the number that we're dealing with? And we're actually talking about 187 for those three sites?
The 564 number is the number that we had to provide to address the potential impacts as part of CEQA. So that exercise is a strict numbers exercise. If you have 10 acres and you can do 20 dwelling units an acre, it's 200 units. It doesn't take into account constraints, it doesn't take into account the development standards. It's a strict numbers game, and if you can make those work, then anything lower than that would be okay. So that's the conservative approach. Realistically, with the objective standards that staff is proposing, you wouldn't be able to completely raise the site and do units from end to end. You just couldn't do it because you have to provide parking, you have to provide open space, you have to ensure that you don't trip your 60% coverage. There are a lot of objective standards, which are guardrails, to ensure that we get something that we feel is compatible with our goals, our vision of how the community should develop. So what we estimated was a realistic expectation of what we could see on that site and still meet our objective standards and realize our community imperatives. We would not and did not tell HCD that we would be doing 564 units because we, our professional experience tells us that you cannot get 564 units on that site, that realistically, if you kept the existing shopping center and you allowed for the existing major tenants to remain intact, you're looking at some number smaller than that. So when our assistant director, our previous assistant director, took a look at this exercise, because this was her project, she went and she spent a lot of time and energy analyzing the constraints on every site. She's worked here- She's worked here, she had worked here for many, many years, and so she was familiar with traffic patterns, with the environment, and she provided what, in her professional opinion, in her experience, was a, a educated guess of what we would realize. That is the number that we gave to HCD, and that is the number that we're planning for. So our objective standards would allow those units to be created, but it would not necessarily allow 564 units to be created.
Right. And what guaranteed we have that the owner of any of those properties would maybe turn around and say, you know what, I'm going to take out the shopping centers, and I'm just going to put residential there?
They wouldn't be allowed to do that because the objective standards that we're proposing says that you have to have a minimum of two-thirds residential on the property and no less than 20% commercial on the property. So they couldn't get rid of all the commercial even if they wanted to because the objective standards that we're proposing wouldn't allow for that.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying that. And also, can you explain to me again why we have to have all 20 sites because of the requirements for a buffer?
So once the city council approved the 20, the 20 sites that we have, we began work so that we could receive a certification in time to meet the statutory deadline. So the city council told us which of the, which sites in the city to use, and we analyzed those sites as part of our environmental document. We began working with HCD to ensure that those sites would be acceptable and that we would be able to get approval on our housing element. And we've passed the affirmatively furthering fair housing bar, which requires us to ensure that you have no concentration of affordable units in one area. Ours are spread throughout the city. Our rezoning program met, our rezoning program proved up what we were trying to say. We are serious about providing these units, and we, we had a strategy. And they've given us preliminary approval on what we have. If you were to change what they have seen, it will no longer, your preliminary approval may not still stand, which means that we have 60 days from August the 14th to October 15th to receive certification. If we change the site, we won't, they'll need more than 60 days to review it because now it's a new, it's a new document. So your preliminary approval may go out the window and you'd have to start your review all over again.
Thank you. When I read through the massive environmental report update, one of the things that jumped out at me was that it stated that there is no, we haven't taken into consideration the evacuations, and therefore there's no effect on them. But in fact, we actually have taken into that, into consideration in it, with, with the COG, correct? So could you explain that a little bit more to me?
Sure. The reason that, and I will let Craig follow behind me if you want to add anything, but the threshold is, you have to be consistent with evacuation plans, right? And we don't have an evacuation plan, we're in the process of drafting one. The evacuation plan that exists is the COGS plan. And since we don't have a plan, we can't be inconsistent with the plan, and so there was no effect. However, we received over 90% of the, of the comments that we received as part of the environmental document, and the review of this project said, we were concerned about evacuation. Evacuation is a problem for us. And so to address, to be able to address those issues from a position of knowledge, we contracted with Kim Lee Horn to go and tell us, well, what is the capacity and how would we, how would we evacuate people? And so that was the reason why we did the study, so that we could, so that we had the information to be able to address the impacts. And so that's why that information was presented.
Correct. And we're already seeing some visible signs of that in the city, for instance, with the new box, the beacon boxes. Is that right?
That's correct. And I'll let Nate speak to that because we have, it's, there's more than one, more than one change we've made since Woolsey that's intended to improve communication and to make people aware if, in the event of an emergency. So I'll defer to Nate Hamburger for that.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. So the actions taken by the city in regards to emergency response and, and services have been, those beacon boxes that you may see in the parks and in strategic locations are to assist in mutual aid and provide maps for anybody that's coming into the city to, so we have a quick response. But in regards to evacuation, we have been working as a region, what we'll call our Council of Governments, which is the five cities in our area. And we've been working with Los Angeles County and the Office of Emergency Services. And we have a program that's called, the name of the company is Zone Haven. And basically, it, it's a software program that allows to analyze the impacts of a fire or any emergency that comes about, and so that we can react and appropriately evacuate by zones throughout the city and the area. And so that's what we've been working on, and those are actually in the final stages of, of being done, as well as additional trainings. And we are also offering home hardening program for our residents in the area at no cost. So we have, we have a variety of programs that we're implementing on top of the evacuation services.
Thank you so much. And then finally, if we said, you know what, the state's crazy, we're not doing this at all, what are the legal ramifications to us at that point?
For that question, I'll defer to the city attorney, Diana Barat.
Yes, so kind of along the lines of what I was mentioning before, if the city chooses not to adopt the housing element, our general plan would be out of compliance, and the city almost certainly would be subject to an HCD enforcement action. Much of the consequences built into state law now involve administrative enforcement from the state. So HCD likely would refer the city to the attorney general, and then we may be subject to a lawsuit from the attorney general. We also could be subject to lawsuit from third parties challenging city for not having complied with state housing element law. So the result is really litigation focused, and as I mentioned, there are potential consequences in such a case of what the court might order with respect to a loss of local control over issuing permits or being forced, forced to approve certain developments without the benefit of having the standards that staff has worked on to try and frame those potential housing projects in, in the realm of what this community might actually want to see.
And what is the financial impact to the city?
The financial impact of such litigation would be quite large there. You know, obviously, in addition to attorney's fees for the city's own attorneys, there would be potential for the court to order that the city pay the attorney's fees for the petitioner. And then if the city did not comply with any court orders, there are additional potential penalties and fines that could come.
And what do they, where do those fines range from?
I can't tell you the specific amount. There is a certain, it sort of depends on how egregious the city's noncompliance is, but there are, in state law, provisions that it could be, I think it's 10,000 per day for a certain amount of time while the city is out of compliance. And there are multipliers that apply to that as well.
Because one of the, the documents we received, it said there's a potential of 100,000 a month in fines. And then that could go up to 600 after six months.
Right. So there's a six, a six times multiplier after a certain period of time. So it just depends on how egregiously and how long the duration of the noncompliance.
So it could be considerable amount of money for the city?
Yes, most certainly.
Thank you very much. That concludes my questions. I would like to thank all of you here in the chamber for sitting here through all of this. I know it was a lot to absorb, and we want to get to your comments as quickly as possible, but I hope you will allow us to take a, a quick 10-minute break, and then we will come back and hear everything that you have to say. Thank you so much. And do I need to gavel this, to suspend the meeting? Yes?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. We'll be back soon. Thank you.[1133.83]
I would like to reconvene the meeting. First of all, I would like to thank you for sitting here for all this time. I know it's been very difficult. I know a lot of it has been probably rather boring for you, but it's the procedural, you know, we have a certain structure that we have to follow for these meetings. We have to follow the, you know, the rules and we have a lot of information unfortunately tonight. I would like to, poor Robbie, this is your first Planning Commission meeting with us. I apologize, we usually do not take this long. We usually move along much faster, but this is a huge element and it's going to affect everybody that lives, not only in this city, but in our neighboring communities. Having said that, I don't want to waste any more time. We will now move on to public comments. I will defer to the clerk.
Thank you, Vice Chair Sylvester. So, prior to the meeting, we did receive several written public comments that were distributed to the Planning Commission. They are from Steve Haas, Cornell; Ray Grulick, representing PRISM; Brad Rosenheim, Agoura Hills, representing Agoura Village Owners Association; Michelle Santucci, Oak Park; Lynn Rollo, Oak Park, submitted two; Elise Lazar, representing Save Open Space, submitted two; Shane Fogel; Jess Thomas, Agoura Hills; Mike Simmons, representing PRISM; Joanne Ventreska; Christina Lopez; and we did receive one in person this evening that was passed along the dais for your review from Sina Mozahary. And we do have speaker cards. Our first is Bob Coetz, followed by Mary Weisbrock.
Good evening. My name is Bob Coetz. My wife Frances and I moved here back into, back in nineteen-
Excuse me, can you make sure your microphone is turned on?
Hello, is the microphone turned on?
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you for reminding me, I appreciate it. I'm rather anxious to get started. My name is Bob Coetz. My wife and I, Frances and I, moved here back in 1987. At my behest, Deputy Sheriff Brian Knott at the Lost Hills Sheriff's Office informed me a week or so ago that there have been 29 traffic accidents, both with and without injury, in the past few years along Canaan Road near the Vons, Ralphs, and Agora Deli shopping centers. I cannot imagine that the Sheriff's Office wants us to increase the risk of accidents in our neighborhood. I suspect that most of you have been on Canaan Road at Thousand Oaks Boulevard at 7:30 or 8:00 in the morning. It's pretty congested there, with people trying to get on the freeway to go to work amidst the congestion. Most people just wait in line, but some cut in front. Also, a lot of parents drop their kids off. This is the only area in Agoura Hills which serves seven different schools. That's seven different schools. The other day, my wife and I were headed down Canaan Road toward the freeway and saw that several cars that were slowing down at the entrance to the Agora Deli parking lot, with some stopped in the middle of the road, some turning in, some turning out, all at the same time. There was a lot of congestion. A collision occurred there, which tore the right front fender off a car and bent its wheels so badly that the car could not move. All its airbags had deployed, and as we moved by, I realized that no one was getting out of that car, and several people were running toward it. I'll never forget seeing that mess. For me, it now defines what can result from congestion. Could you please, this evening, take a minute to try to imagine something? What will it be like when the heavy construction trucks and trailers and excavation power shovels will be going in and out of that entrance, vying with you for access to and from Canaan Road? Those big dump trucks are required to remove the dirt for the new underground parking area. And then comes all the thousands of neighbors taking their turn entering and leaving those centers on foot by electric bike as well as by cars and trucks. And based on what I heard this evening, that's for eight, uh, new, uh, units. When I heard about the possibility of heavily increasing the congestion along Canaan near the Agora Deli, Vons, and Ralphs parking lots, and so increasing the risk of exits and exits of all our shopping centers, I was pretty upset. Do you really want to make it worse? Please vote to remove those three shopping centers from the list.
Thank you so much. I would just like to make sure the public understands that we cannot comment during the public comments, that we comment at the end. So, please don't be offended if we don't respond to you individually at this point. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Weisbrock, followed by Frances Coetz.
I've just given each Planning Commissioner a PowerPoint. It's been done and put together by Dr. Fontaine. He teaches at Pepperdine. He teaches accounting and finance. On page one, the first chart, Agoura Hills housing needs are more than met without the Canaan Shopping Centers. And we're looking at the lower numbers, the 187. You can see the traffic and we now know it's going to be an F, the worst ever, yikes, if AHO goes in there at Canaan and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Chart two, turn to chart two, please, Planning Commissioners. Agoura Hills' own documentation indicates low-income housing needs can be met without the three Canaan Shopping Centers. You only need 199 low-income housing. You take out the Canaan Shopping Centers and you have 243 low-income housing units. Chart three, the results. You have a potential available units exceeded by 42 units without the Canaan Shopping Centers. This is a huge buffer, 21%, and it satisfies the state's no-net loss. You do not need the three Canaan Shopping Centers to meet your RENA requirements. Chart four of this PowerPoint by a professor from Pepperdine. Agoura Hills' own documentation indicates all the housing needs can be met without the Canaan Shopping Centers. We're looking at the moderate and above moderate. You take out the shopping centers and you're going to have 118 moderate and above moderate, 855 housing units without the Canaan Shopping Centers. Chart five, this exceeds what you need. There'll be 63 moderate, 791 moderate, above moderate, without the Canaan Shopping Centers. Let's look at the percentages, the no-net loss. Low income, 21% more than you need without the Canaan Shopping Centers. Moderate, 114% more than you need without the Canaan Shopping Centers. Above moderate, 1,235% without the Canaan Shopping Centers. In the LA Times, I'm going to turn in, you have two more months. You don't have to do the zoning by October. You have two more months to fix this environmental document and to take out the Canaan Shopping Centers. You have plenty of time to fix it. And listen to the 900-plus- Thank you for keeping me at the three minutes. I really appreciate that.
If you haven't finished yet, would you like to continue?
I'm going to turn in the PRISM letter, the STACK letter, all these letters up to February that, that want you to take out the Canaan Shopping Centers.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Frances Coetz, followed by James Larson.
If I'd known, I would have brought a blanket and some bedding tonight, but all is good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking our comments. My name is Frances Coetz. I'm a retired cardiac nurse and secretary for Save Open Space, and I do reside in Oak Park. Noting that the City Council is about to make a decision regarding the building of housing on three parking lots adjacent to the Canaan and Thousand Oaks Boulevards, including the centers that house the Agora Deli, Italian Market, and the shopping center where Ralphs is located, it occurred to me that it was an utter disaster that will occur. We have been living in Oak Park for many years and frequently drive to these shopping centers. I am aware of many accidents. On two separate occasions, that my husband and I saw, the result of which of going, two SUVs, one of them was flipped on its side, and in the last three weeks, an elderly man in a small car, his front end of his car, including the driver's side, was smashed in, and the, um, airbags were deployed. It was frightening to just watch this happening. This is a problem that goes on in this area all the time. Every time we're trying to go into the parking lot or get out of the parking lot, you've got several traffic situations going on. In the past many years, we in these communities have had to deal with fires and the traffic from Pacific Coast Highway to Canaan, frequently enough to realize that adding more traffic to get on the freeways from our homes and the shopping centers would incur serious enough traffic problems to cause more accidents in the area. Adding to this, underground parking that is projected to be built, which can and will trap drivers trying to get out of these lots, are forecast. Are you aware that not only the folks from our neighborhoods come into these shopping centers, but residents from Malibu come here to shop because they don't have enough shopping areas where they live? To enter and exit these shopping centers, we have several traffic situations to deal with. Vehicles entering one side of the driveway from, from the north end of Canaan and one coming from Thousand Oaks Boulevard and the driveways. There's one way to get in and out of the freeway in our area, and that has caused several bottlenecks, where people are unable to get away in an emergency and have been unable to leave this area. I understand there will be over 500 apartments the Agoura Hills City Council and builders are considering to build in this area. Three parking lots, I think, that has an incredibly ill-advised concept. I'm sure many of you live in the area. Do you want to be trapped in the underground parking where serious congestion and/or disasters occur? That could happen now. I'll tell you about the fact that during the earthquake, there are people in Westlake that were unable to leave the community because the freeways were closed by the police. They couldn't even get out. They had, they were rich enough to stay in hotels around here, which is lovely. And the other thing is, I, we live in Oak Park, we're about five minutes from the freeway. It took us a half an hour to get the freeway to get out, and that's only because we knew at 11:30 we needed to leave sooner than other people. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
I, excuse me, I also have a comment from the Oak Park Municipal Advisory Council, which I will leave with you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is James Larson, followed by Cindy Larson.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jim Larson. I've been a resident of Old Agoura for 32 years. I'm here speaking tonight to put forth the following information concerning the Agoura Hills Housing Element, SEIR, into the record. As shown in Table 3-1, most properties in our city propose maxima, to maximize the number of units permitted under the zoning, page 3-30, Housing Element. Due to our city's history that the max is what the developers typically request in our city, it is correct to state, once the upzoning at our three Canaan Shopping Centers is approved, the decision-makers cannot guarantee that the maximum number of units will not be built. It is feasible to increase the percentage of affordable at your non-congested, non-controversial sites. Other cities are doing this to meet their RHNA numbers. Attached are newspaper articles demonstrating this in the cities of Oxnard and Camarillo. Also attached is the attractive Shiloh Gardens whereby the city of Thousand Oaks had our local nonprofit Many Mansions set this affordable housing up. Why is Agoura Hills not doing that? Lastly, the nursery site on Dorothy Drive, which was mentioned in the presentation prior. There are state grants of multi-millions which our city could apply for, the interested landowner, landowner of the nursery property on Dorothy Drive. See the attachment. This landowner could then partner with Many Mansions and set of 10 affordable units here, 80% or 40 units. Why not? Other cities have sites where the percentage is more than 20% affordable. Why is our city not considering this? I'm against adding residential units to the three shopping centers due to also the harm that would occur to the Canaan evacuation route. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Cindy Larson, followed by Carolyn Cass Barton.
Before I start, I'd like to note, I've timed my speech and I really think I'm at three minutes, but being that we've had-
We're, we're letting you run long tonight, so don't worry about that.
So, I can say what I want to say. Thank you very much. I, I appreciate that. My name is Cindy Larson. I've been a resident of Agoura Hills for 32 years. I am joining the Oak Park Municipal Advisory Council, Save Open Space, and countless citizens of Oak Park and Agoura Hills in their deep concerns over the possibility of you approving upzoning on these three shopping centers on Canaan Road and, as future sites for residential development. We've collected over a thousand signatures from citizens who are against the city's desire to build apartments on these three sites. And I will tell you, my husband and I have tried to go out and do these petitions as often as we could, and it's hard because you have a life, but we did try to go out Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, in front of Ralphs and Vons. And I am telling you the God's truth. Maybe one person out of hundreds thought this was a good idea. Everybody we talked to coming in and out of Vons said, "What's the matter with these people? Are they nuts? What, what kind of, what makes sense? There's no sense to this." I swear, this is the reaction, and almost every person wanted to sign our petition. If we were able to be there more often, we would have had thousand more signatures. But like I said, we all have lives. I, we weren't the only ones who petitioned, but I'm telling you, this is the consensus of your community, and it is your obligation to listen to the constituents of the community. These already congested retail centers on Canaan are a major evacuation route to over 10,000 Oak Park and Agoura Hill residents. This already dire evacuation situation was experienced in the Woolsey Fire with gridlock cars on Canaan trying to evacuate in the fast-moving fire. My home was a victim of the Woolsey Fire, and I speak firsthand. It is your civic duty to also look at the reputable study that says Oak Park has the same lack of evacuation route as the 2018 fire in Paradise, California, where many people could not evacuate and burned to death. After seeing this study, common sense should have led the City Council to have taken these three sites off the table and fought to keep Canaan Road a permanent evacuation route. No one understands why the City Council does not realize all the harm and negative impact that changing the zoning could cause. Is the City Council willing to put people's lives in peril? Are we wrong that we care more- lives in peril? Are we wrong that we care more about our city than you and the city council? Are you willing to put any financial gain that may get ahead for the city, that may gain, get ahead of human lives? Is that the legacy you want to be remembered for? Greed over lives? Why what is so obvious to everyone else is not to you and the council? Why can you not see the terribly negative impact building apartments on these three sites would create with the addition of so many more people in cars on Canaan when Canaan is already impacted? My God, on an average day, when Agora High School's getting out, Oak Park High is getting out, the junior highs are getting out, we are already in gridlock without an emergency. I am here tonight to implore you to stop the upzoning at the three Canaan Road shopping centers, and that you recommend to the city council in strong terms that building any additional housing on these three sites is a huge safety issue that doesn't make any sense to anyone except for overzealous developers. There are at least 17, as you've seen, other alternative, more appropriate locations already on the city's list to satisfy the state's mandate. On behalf of thousands of voters, I beg you to recommend to the city council to deny upzoning on these three sites and to take them off the table and instead designate Canaan Road as an official evacuation route. Our city council was elected to benefit the welfare of the people. Our health and welfare ought matter to them. The only other thing I'd like to close with, and I again appreciate the time. You're talking about these time trips for evacuations. Do you understand that when there's a disaster, whether it be a fire or an earthquake, you have no idea what time of day it's going to happen? If, God forbid, it would be an earthquake and the pavements are opening up, that's going to impede on your so-called trip-trip numbers. You can't predict something like Every disaster is different, but I'll tell you one thing. The bottom line is this. It's so simple, and I'm almost done. The bottom line is this. If you build on these three shopping sites, which is going to have more people, who have at least two people per family, which means at least two cars, that's going to add more cars on Canaan, and that's going to make a bad situation much worse. And who should everyone blame? You and our city council. So please, I'm begging you, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carolyn Cass Barton, followed by Dan Barton.
Well, she said everything that I was going to say. I double it, okay? I live in Oak Park. I've been a resident there for 43 years, and I am here to adamantly object to the proposal for the additional housing overlay at the three shopping centers, which will impact the Canaan evacuation route. I have already turned in to you some weeks ago a packet with stories and articles from all over the country talking about California must improve traffic capacity on fire evacuation routes. There are countless studies that talk about 13 ZIP codes in Southern California identified as the worst 1% in the state when it comes to population to evacuation route ratios, more than Northern and Central California combined, and this includes Oak Park, California, okay? I did not know that until I Googled evacuation routes myself. The intersection, as you know, is already impacted by at least seven schools and general commuter traffic on a daily basis. Additional housing will mean additional cars, obviously. It took me 40, our family, 45 minutes to evacuate from Oak Park during the Woolsey Fire. This is a picture of our evacuation situation, okay? Nobody evacuated all at exactly the same time. We were impacted by the cars from Fountainwood, from Hillrise, and from Morrison Ranch. Forty-five minutes to go two miles. We stayed the night at the CVS parking lot because there were no hotels available, and I consider that a safe zone. We stayed in our car. The impact of development in those three shopping centers with construction and retrofitting will definitely impact all the citizens, okay? I've submitted this study that Oak Park is in the worst 1% of the state when it comes to population to evacuation route ratios. I've already mentioned that. I want to call you. I've already said that. Sorry. Thank you. I'm tired. I waited a long time. Okay. These articles that I've presented to you in the New York Times, LA Times, Washington Post, USA Today, Washington Times, AP News, ABC News, we were mentioned, Oak Park. The discussion of evacuation routes is going to be the new normal in our current climate change crisis. Wildfires are inevitable. Okay, I'm asking you, I'm begging you, to please remove the three shopping center sites on Canaan and TO so that we can have a safe evacuation plan for not only the citizens of Agora Hills, but also Oak Park. We have no out for those of us who live in the eastern side of Oak Park. When the fire was coming, we could not go towards Lindero Canyon and get out. All the rest of these citizens had to come down Agora, or excuse me, Canaan Road, okay? There was no other way out. So please consider this when you're making your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dan Barton, followed by Ted Snyder.
It's okay. Take your time. Thank you.
Hello, companion commissioners. I'm a retired general contractor. This SEIR is not adequate. It is not feasible to consider alternate locations in underutilized parking lots as just-- I gotta take a break for a minute.
Please do.
The IR is not adequate as it is not feasible to consider alternate location in underutilized parking lots of our-- as is--
Would you like me to read your statement for you? Would somebody like to read it for him? Thank you so much.
Carolyn?
Yeah, I'm having a speech problem here. I don't know why.
Stay here with me. Okay, this SEIR is not adequate as it is feasible to consider alternative locations in underutilized parking lots, as our sister cities have done, attached Thousand Oaks and Calabasas parking lot sites. The almost mile-long Agora Hills Business Park has underutilized parking lots. These suitable properties are where the jobs are, served by a bikeway near the library, community center, and transit. It appears that Agora Hills used the land value to improvement ratio to, land value to improvement ratio to not consider these underutilized parking lots. But the new market because of COVID and working from home has enabled parking lots in non-vacant sites to be considered. The state is accepting underutilized parking lots, so this is a feasible and acceptable alternative. Why not add mixed use with its affordable housing overlay, AHO, to all of these Agora Hills Business Park properties? This will not only add huge value to the properties, but the property owners do not have to utilize the AHO and can be asked to be taken off the list. This business park manufacturing area is an excellent area for housing opportunities as it is next to a large job center on a major safe bikeway and less than a mile from transit at Agora Road and, excuse me, Agora Road and Lindero Canyon, near two libraries and Agora Hills Recreation Center. It is and will continue to be a LOSA area or better in traffic. See the level of service attachment. I'm submitting a rough drawing of what could go in the 2.6-acre empty lot at this business park property at 30801 Agora Road. Either two apartment buildings and a parking garage structure and/or three apartment buildings with a parking garage structure in front of the existing 30801 building can be accommodated. Thank you, Dan Barton.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ted Snyder.
Good evening. My name is Ted Snyder, and I'm with Symphony Development, and we're the owners of the southwest corner of Agora and Canaan Roads, known as the Pumpkin Patch or, you know, Parcel B. Although we've submitted a application for our project on that site, and we're actively pursuing that, we did want to get some comfort that our site, in fact, will, you know, be viable under this new overlay. We've provided some feedback to the, to planning, and we are hopeful to have some more dialogue. But I wanted to try to understand a little bit about the process from here as it relates to, you know, getting additional commentary and perhaps some minor changes made. To the extent it's approved tonight, will there be a window before it goes to city council to review some of that? Also, will it be a living document as it relates to the objective standards going forward? A couple examples. One that we find that's troublesome that I think would preclude us from development is the ratio of 1/3 commercial to residential square footage. And I, we've been working on this site for six years, so we've done the numbers. And so, I think a missing element here is that when you add, you know, 1,000 square feet of commercial, you add seven parking stalls, and that chews a big chunk of your site. Our site, as presented in our application, includes 10%, excuse me, 10 units per acre, and we're just under 30% ratio. So adding housing, we would have to just load the site up with some additional retail. So from a math perspective, it doesn't work, and we would be excluded from, you know, building under the overlay. Another item that was brought up as it relates to slopes, we are probably one of the less controversial sites in that, you know, we're seven acres, we slope down 30 feet to the creek, our average slope is 14. But we have two areas that we have close to 35% slope for the overlay. It's a no-build. It's a no-go. And this is, I'm referring to the entry off of Agora Road where we have to come up and get up to the site. It's, that's an area that has to be graded. Additionally, we have some bans on our site from dumping of 35. So I hope there's some opportunity to discuss that and maybe make some adjustments. I, you know, if we said, you know, the site, if it's under 15% slope, these overlying requirements don't apply, that would work for us, but I don't know about other sites. Additionally, I've provided a fair amount of comment on the actual envelope of the buildings, and hopefully those will get some consideration. Those essentially focus in on the efficiency of the building, you know, does the building stack for structural integrity? Are there ability to run your HVAC and plumbing and so forth in, you know--
Ted, I don't mean to be rude, but you have exceeded, and you're discussing a specific project that I think could be addressed at a later stage. So if you could wrap up, I would appreciate it.
Okay, well, as I say, I think there are a lot of things that can be done to make the buildings efficient and also attractive from articulation, color, and so forth. I'm hopeful to have additional dialogue with planning, and I'm hoping that this set of standards can be reviewed, particularly in the early stages, with frequency. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. There are no further in-person public speakers. However, we'll now defer to staff for any Zoom public speakers.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Chair Sylvester, there are hands raised to speak on this item. Before we begin live testimony, if you have your hand raised but do not intend to speak on this item, please take a moment now to click on the lower-hand tab on your screen. Requests to speak must be received prior to the chair closing the public comment portion of the item. Speakers will be called in the order they appear on my screen. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. A 30-second notice will be provided by the clerk, and the microphone will be muted when the three minutes have expired. Prior to speaking, please clearly state your first and last name and provide your city of residence for the record. Our first speaker will be Ning, followed by Lynn Rollo. Go ahead, Ning. You're able to speak.
Hi, everyone. This is Ning Rosenthal. I'm an epidemiologist and also an Oak Park resident. I have been living in Oak Park since 2015, not as long as some of the, you know, fellow Agora Hills and Oak Park citizens lived. But I have two little kids, and I plan to stay here for a very long time. So although we have been here just since 2015, we have experienced all the problems that my fellow citizens described. The intersection between Thousand Oaks and Canaan is absolutely the worst interaction, intersection on the road. It's the busiest and it messes, and it's a huge gridlock over the traffic. So I share all the concerns that other Agora Hills and Oak Park residents expressed tonight. Canaan is the only evacuation route for us, Oak Park residents. And as Laura presented in her analysis, during the Woolsey Fire, the regular, it took like 30 to 40 minutes for the residents at the Agora border and Oak Park border to evacuate. And I don't know how you came up with that 10 minutes additional, but any minute additional will be life-threatening in that situation. So everybody know what happens to Paradise. And as my fellow citizen presented, Oak Park situation is worse than Paradise. So who will be responsible for all the potential danger to lives, you know, Park and Agora when natural disasters happen? Like, it sounds like the state is doing it one way, like just requiring that, sorry, my side is here. So, you know, like, it seems like they're one way. They only care about one problem, provide affordable housing, and I'm all for that. But they need to understand the potential threat in our community for this kind of things. So I really, I, you know, I want to join all other people present today to urge the city council to remove the three shopping center sets from the list because this has huge impact in our community. It's about life or death when disaster happens. So if there is, you know, somebody died because of the decision--